Welcome, everybody, to our work session tonight. We're going to make it a working supper, I guess you would call it, dinner for some folks. Anyway, welcome to our work session. We've got a lot to cover tonight, and so we'll get started with Ms. Moody and Ms. Benson talking about our CTE program. I appreciate y'all putting this together. There was a lot of questions about the funding for CTE.
Thank you for having us here tonight. We're going to, and I've actually brought, thankfully, since I was new in all this, Leanna's been helping me and Charlie has been helping a whole lot, so we'll go ahead and kind of look at CTE funding and how things are done.
So, CTE is funded, and we talked a little bit about this in finance Monday night, but CTE is funded based off of the ADM in eighth through 12th grade, okay? So, we have three allotments, State PRC 13, which is months of employment. Months of employment, we try to keep all that, every teacher paid under the months of employment in PRC 13. And that is based off of 50 months of employment per LEA, and then the remainder is distributed by the ADM in grades eight through 12. The same is in the dollar allotment we get in State 14. That is a $10,000 allotment per LEA, and the remainder is distributed at $39.10 per student in eighth through 12th grade. I put together last year's ADM and this year's ADM, so you could see just between eighth through 12th grade, we had 2,529 students in '23-'24, which funded us last year. But this past year, '24-'25, we had 2,400 students. So that is a reduction of 129 students between eighth through 12th grade. So that caused a reduction in our funding, just right off the bat because of the ADM there.
And you say it's $39.10 per pupil?
Per pupil, yeah. So we get, sorry, I think this is on the Moodle, didn't it? Did you put it on the Moodle, so they can pull it up when they, if they want to look at it? So there's a slide right there, and that came straight off the allotment policy, that first slide, and it tells you how those PRCs are funded. The other set of funding comes from federal, and, you know, I talk in PRC numbers, but it's federal 17. It's allotted a little differently, but the two state pots is the predominant funding for CTE, and that's how that's funded. The next slide I put together was history from last year and this year. Last year, we were funded in State 13, which is our months of employment, we had 332 months that we were funded. This year, in '25-'26, we lost 24 months of employment. So we were funded at 308 months of employment. So if you take that, if you think of a 10-month teacher, that's basically two, almost two and a half teachers right there that we lost funding for this year. In order to absorb that, as Dr. Putnam has talked, and we've all talked, the goal is nobody to lose their job, so try to keep everybody employed. We had one person resign trying to absorb those 24 months in resignations or retirements. No one retired that was in CTE. We had one resignation, which was at Pisgah High School, so that gave us 10 we were able to use. And then Stephanie can talk about how they adjusted some positions between Central Haywood and Bethel Middle and Tuscola to use up five months each there. So we were able to absorb those 24 months in cuts that were made at Pisgah in that loss of employment there, and then no one losing their job, but just adjusting some vacancies there, and the way some of the classes are allotted with teachers. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, I mean, I think they're in dual roles, so there might be a part-time CTE and then teaching something else within the county, of course, but also half-time teacher. So that's kind of taken care of some teachers between the high schools and middle schools, and it's Central Haywood.
Give them an example of that, Stephanie, of somebody.
So, Mr. Bailey at Central Haywood, it is not a full-time CTE teacher, so he's half. Another example would be, and this is not a great example, but Bethel Middle right now doesn't have a CTE teacher, but they were half-time for the whole year. So I don't know if you want to add to that, too.
Like, Mr. Bailey's teaching half, he's still a full-time teacher-
Yeah, he's full-time-
But he moved into a half-a-science teacher, and then he's teaching CTE half. So he, you know, nothing happened with his job, just the positions changed.
So that allowed to keep him, you know, within full-time employment, but benefited CTE, the months of employment. So, went through to see what was happening in the other counties, and so that is the comparison of '20, '24, '25, and '25, '26. So you can see, they've also lost months of employment due to decreasing student numbers. So, and I put Mecklenburg in there just because, you know, they're larger, and just to kind of see further down east what's going on there, but you can see around us what has happened. So, Jackson County, of course, lost nine months, Buncombe, 37 months of employment, Madison won, Hendersonville, Henderson County, 28, Burke, 28, Mecklenburg, 243, and we lost the 24 months of employment.
So on the budget side, if you see the difference there in State 14 from last year's initial allotment of $111,210, this year, we received $101,536. So that's a reduction of $9,674. Then in our federal grant, 17, last year, we received $127,000. This year, they're only funding us at $112,000. So that's a reduction that we've lost $15,088 there. We have what you guys are familiar with, the Dogwood Grant that pays, that we have, this is the third year of that grant, and that was paying the two additional career development coordinators that were hired. Because of the increase in salaries and benefits with that, this very final year, there's not quite enough funding in there to see that through this last year. So we're going to have a shortage in there of a projected $11,307 this year in that grant funding to keep those positions going.
So, in State Fund 14-
Mm-hmm.
What money, where does that money, is that, that's not just for salaries, that's money that they get to operate the programs off of?
Correct.
So we've got, so basically, we've had a $24,000 loss in money to operate the program, because we absorbed the teacher through the cuts that we made with Pisgah and these other schools?
Correct.
Okay.
Out of both of those pots, 14 and 17, those dollar allotments, those, only a small percentage of that goes to salaries. So like, last year, I pulled the projection, but I don't, I didn't put the slide up there, but I can, $41,000 was spent on salaries. We actually had $185,000 last year in the pots of money, because we had some vacancies mid-year that we were not able to fill. So when it came towards the end of the year, there was some months of employment that was remaining that we were not going to be able to use, because we had like a half-year resignation of vacancy at Tuscola, we had partial at Pisgah, we had a partial one at Bethel Middle School, so we had some months left. So I did an ABC transfer, Jacob and I discussed, where we could cash in those months of employment for some money, the money value, where then we could put it in 14, and then he could spend it. So he had additional funds last year, so that gave additional money for him to spend on supplies. And like, towards the end of the year, he sent out to CTE a wish list to say, you know, what would you not been able to have, but you would really like for your program, and he was able to buy some things that were above what they normally do because of that. But that's a rare, you know, that doesn't happen all the time. That was just because of those vacancies, and we had subs in those positions or long-term interns. Like, Ms. Lance came back and filled some. Those didn't use up months of employment, because that was a sub.
Those positions have been filled now?
Some, you can-
Well, I'm trying to think of which positions have been filled, that's where-
Yeah, and that state money, like, the reason it happened at the end of the year is because we have to revert it.
Right.
Like, we would have lost it. And so you don't know, is somebody going to hire somebody, is, you know, in case you're going to find somebody in April, you know, it's like a final thing.
Seventy-four, around 74,000, 75,000, which is a lot of money to then turn into supplies that would be needed.
What, where are those positions now? Are they still-
Those positions are mainly those that were cut, the 15.
Okay, so we didn't fill those, so we can't cash anything, because those got pulled away from us?
The only, we could cash in if something were to happen this year, and somebody were to leave or something, yeah.
If we have some vacancies.
But if that, right, vacancies.
If somebody leaves mid-year and we're not able to fill a position, you know, someone resigns and we're not able to fill it, and then we have some months, we would have some towards the end of the year.
Does that always happen, like, every year, where you have money at the end of the year?
No. As far as I know, this is the only second time that, where I looked back, that we were able to cash in any months. We don't want to do that unless we have to, because it looks like, well, you really don't need those positions, so I send in a very good explanation as to why we're cashing that in, and we don't do it till, towards the end of the year, because those positions are posted, you know, they're trying to hire, but sometimes it's hard to find people to come in, because those are career positions that people, you know, they're just not a lot of people, applicants out there, I guess.
And we were able to, if you remember, and Leanna and Charlie helped me, but with ESAR money, we had those years, too, but for the, up against this past year. So we had, you know, ways that we could spend money through CTE then, and so teachers were getting things then, because we had ESAR funds, too.
Is that where it's at?
So, it's just kind of a double whammy, but we weren't buying things we couldn't sustain, or positions.
Yeah.
But they, we had more funds then that-
For supplies.
For supplies, and, yeah, we-
They, whatever, they needed for a while, and then all of a sudden, it all went away.
Yeah, and we kept telling them, you know, Charlie was on that, you know, you know, get what you need now, because this may never come again.
Right.
The only other thing I want to say, you know, with Leanna saying we didn't want them to think we didn't have teacher, just remember, and I talked to Ms. Marsh about this, but in the community, the community college, the kids going to the, if all y'all teach a CTE at Tuscola, it doesn't matter how many kids you have in your classroom, okay? And it doesn't matter if they're going to the community college, because the funding is based on the ADM, and what Ms. Moody just went over. So the community college, you know, if you hear in the community, like, they're stealing our kids, or, you know, our kids are going down there, well, that's not hurting our funding, okay? So I think that's something really clear to make clear, it's not. And, you know, within our classes, if we don't have the numbers in classes, then, you know, that's where we got to, you know, and Stephanie's doing a great job, get grants and pivot to different classes that maybe our kids want to take, and things like that, but that's another story for another day, but I do want to make sure everyone understands that the community college doesn't hurt our funding.
It helps our kids-
It helps our kids have other opportunities.
Without taking away funding.
Yes.
Like, they're getting extra opportunities, but it's not cutting our funding.
Yeah, it's not cutting our funding. Our funding is strictly based on how many kids we have, okay? So that doesn't, that doesn't hurt.
And maybe we can start to get creative, we talked about that Monday night, and start combining like we are with AP, and say, okay, well, we have, maybe Tuscaloosa's going to have shop, and all the kids are going to come there, like, if they have a strong welding class or whatever, like, if we don't have enough kids at both schools, maybe we can combine?
Yeah.
And they can go to the other school to say, I don't know, maybe-
Good idea.
That's what the future will bring to help-
It'd be great, yeah.
To cut, save money.
I think Stephanie, you know, is exploring those options. I do want to say, I feel like I talked to some of y'all, not everyone at finance, but the career development coordinators, when you hear CDC, and you hear CIMC, a CIMC, and don't ask me what it's, Charlie might know, but that position is federally, we have to have that position. It's the old, like, Linda Yates position, and where we had one in the high schools, okay? So that position has always been there, and so we're still funded, we are required to have that one position, and we had that with Anita Bergen, okay? We had that. We, Alisa, thank goodness, wrote a grant, you know, three years ago, and we added two positions. We put one at the middle school in Joyce Holly, who has now met with every middle school kid more than one time, one-on-one about career goals, besides all the other things she's doing there, okay? The other one is at Tuscola High School, and Laura Turner has, and Stephanie can give you numbers, I know there's over 20 interns right now. We were probably the lowest in our regi, I shouldn't say that. Credential-wise, we were the lowest in the region, so we've worked on getting kids more credentials, but I don't know internships, but we have definitely increased internships. She has, last I heard, and I think Stephanie said it's gone up, over 50 kids for the spring signed up in internships. That is a huge difference from where we were. So we cannot do that without those positions. So I've told Trevor, he's got to pay for it, he won't have any money, because we got to keep those positions. I mean, like, this is huge for our community and our county. I feel like we're just now getting to the good part of that. He's going to figure it out. But, anyway, that grant runs out, so we're just really, Stephanie has been killing it. They've been meeting and just trying to, she wrote a huge grant for Golden Leaf, so we'll just all hope that something will come through on that.
So who has the CM, CIMC position, Brandy?
The Brandy Matthews is at for the whole district, and she's at, you know, actually at Pisgah, but she's also the CDC for Pisgah, too.
So she, but she's for both schools?
Yeah, she's for both. And they work, I mean, honestly, what a great-
Right, they work a lot together.
Did I miss something, Charlie? They're a great team. Like, they're getting a lot, was I, did I need to say something else, Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, like, she's, she's at for all, all the-
Yes.
All the schools, not just Pisgah and Tuscola. She's at for the district, as is the CDC and SPC.
Okay.
So it's curriculum, career, and then special populations.
Yeah.
So she's that for the whole district, Brandy is. But then the CDCs are what came out of Dogwood Grant, and so that's the career development coordinators, the extra one at Tuscola, and the extra one for the middle school.
And that's what you're placing there in the Dogwood, it's going to be a little short this year. This is her third year of that grant, and the salaries, you know, because of, like, we talked about benefits, those were higher, and the two people that were in those positions are more experienced, and got more years of experience, so they're higher paid than they, what was actually projected at the beginning. So that's where that shortage has come to fall on them.
But this will take, take them through May?
This will take them through this fiscal year, yes.
Okay.
The DM is in Joy and-
Joy and Laura.
So, so the Dogwood Grant pays for two positions?
Yes.
So that $249,000 is two for, two positions.
So one of the things that I love that they did was they combined, did that save money? Like, I know, like, last year, they combined the career day-
It's a two-year, okay, so that's-
Instead of having one for Tuscola and one for Pisgah, did that, did, I mean, I thought that, that was much better, that way you didn't have to ask businesses to come twice.
That was, yes, and they, they worked so well together with it, and they really got out and got some different people in. You know, we've had a construction, Stephanie was at this week, and then the middle school one, but it did work out better. I think everybody was good with it.
Okay.
Change is hard sometimes, but worked out good.
So to get money up, we either have to get more grants, or pull from local funds or something?
Right, and you'll, we have a slide on here, because I have positives, because I'd like to have some positives.
Yay.
We like to hear those.
You have, like, how much money we had last year, I, taking out what we bought back with the positions, how much money was allotted to spend for supplies for CTE last year, and how much money, money's allotted to spend for supplies for CTE this year, sort of see what that difference is?
Yes, without the money, you probably have it, but I can tell you how much was spent.
Yeah, I know, it was spent, but we hadn't have bought that back. How much would we have spent last, see what that difference is?
The original, we, and Charlie, correct me if I'm going to be wrong on this, we looked at the high schools, because the middle schools just got the lumps, you know, money given to them because of the short, you know, the, not as many CTE teachers. So, last year, I believe it was $48,000 for each high school, and Charlie, I think I'm ballpark that.
Okay.
And then this year, it was $23,000. And so each program, though, does not get, it's not divided equally, because if you look at a welding program, they, they'll need more in money than, you know, another program. So that's where we looked at, and I shouldn't say, we, Charlie had looked at proportionally what was spent over the years, and then made the budget for each program at the high schools.
So you looked at the past, like-
Yes, yes.
Three years?
Yeah.
And you took an average of those three years?
And it was adjusted for, you know, the decrease in funds.
And we told them, Charlie and I, and I know Jacob did, too, it was like, if you really need something, like, we just have to give you a budget, you know, like, if you really need something, try to let us know, so we can plan for it, figure that out. And then we ended up with excess money at the end of the year, but, you know, you got to have, I mean, something might break, you know, there might be something, so, that has to be fixed, that you don't plan for in maintenance or something.
So Ms. Benson, you're saying that Tuscaloosa, Pisgah, Bethel, Waynesville, Canton Middle is different based on ADM number, what they get, is that what you're saying?
Um, the, Charlie, you'll have to help me with this part, with the middle schools, just the money distributed between the schools?
Right, right.
Yes.
Ms. Emma, do you have the money per school pending for this year?
I have it printed, but...
I have last year's, I don't, I don't know what happened this year's.
Give us last year's, Charlie. It's probably proportionally-
But that was before the ADM drop, correct?
Correct.
Right.
This is just a breakdown of each program.
Thank you. And this is last year, so-
This is last year, right?
Yeah. So Bethel Middle, $35,050.
$35,000?
Nope, $3,550.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
I was hoping-
Yeah. You could do a lot, yes. Canton Middle, $3,550. Waynesville, $7,100. Okay. Waynesville Middle, $7,100. Central Haywood, $4,650. Pisgah and Tuscola, each $48,000.
Yes, the numbers, based on the numbers, yes.
And that was last year, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what you're going to get is a breakdown for the programs this year.
Right.
Yeah.
So the drop of 119, or whatever you guys said, that was the two high schools, as well as the eighth grade at each, three middle schools? ADM drop, okay.
Eight, twelve, just eighth grade.
Right, right, right.
So what happens, say, like, they don't use all their supply money, can they roll it over to the next year? Or they have, they have to figure out how to maybe buy things that they're going to need the next year? Because if they turn it back, and they're not going to turn it back in, they lose it. They can't, they can't keep it to use the next year.
Sure they'll spend it.
Yeah, sure they do, yeah.
I mean, the recommendation would be to spend it.
It is to do that, yes.
We don't want to-
That's where we-
We don't want to give any money back.
Yeah, they don't, they don't want us carry it over, so that's when, that's when they were, you do the wish list at the end, and so if there's money left over, then you prioritize on that.
Okay.
Yeah, and one pot of money that we, that Leanna hadn't mentioned, because it's not, can't be used for this, well, I'll talk to you about it, but is for credentialing, and that money gets reverted back, and we were reverting quite a bit of money back. But some of those credentials were really hard to get, but we went, I think Graham was with us, we went to every CTE teacher after Alisa left, and just said, what credentials would you want to offer? And there were things like this, like in welding, they didn't offer that credential because they didn't have the steel.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? And we're like, no, like, we got to get the steel for you, you know, like, things like that. We really tried to go through that, because we were the next to lowest county in the western region in credentials, and I think you'll hear-
Yeah.
A better report about that, but some of those credentials were really helpful for our kids, like safe foods, and OSHA, and there's different ones, so we wanted to make sure, but that pot of money can only be used for test-taking, it can't be used for supplies, for kids taking the actual tests to get the credentials.
So that's a different pot of federal money?
Yes, and that's, that's up there on the slide, and that was just one of the positives. When I came in, to me, I call it free money, it's, it's money given to us, and we were giving money back, and I'm like, why are we doing this? This is benefiting our students, they're going into the workforce, and if they have a credential, they're going to be more hirable than the, somebody who doesn't. So we had talked originally about, let's increase the credentialing, and they've already started that. And we get, at the beginning of the year, we get 30% of the money. So right now, we just got $29,000 in for credentialing money. But you can see, we've already, they have already grown this from 2021, '22, and then this past year, I don't know why it's not on there, but they gave 1,183 credentials, and that's about a 28%. So they've grown, you know, about 5% every year, and you can see the first few years, I have it down, the potential credentials that it could have been earned were there as well. So that's when I said, we need to encourage all of our students to be taking these credentials, because it's benefiting them so much, and they can take it again if they don't do well the first time. So that is one thing that we talked about right away when I got in, and Brandy Matthews had explained it to me and said, okay. And that's when I said, we're not sending any money back this year.
Yes.
We need to take advantage of this, and we need to get the students what they need to have in order to perform well on the credential.
Very good.
And then something else, these, again, I was like, I'm going to share some positives that I think are really positive. We also had some health career exploration grant money, and that's $25,000. And I look at that money, that that is going to help our health science teachers at both schools do what they need to do, so we can free up some of the money that they were getting in the budget. They now have this money that they can do things with their students. And so one really positive thing that has come from that is Tuscola's starting back up their HOSA program.
Oh, yay. I was just going to ask that question.
Yeah. And that was one of the big things. So with this money, I was like, wait a minute, this is again-
I can use that.
Why aren't we using this money? So it's just sitting down, and Charlie and I talked about it, and said, okay, this is what we can use it for. These are some other things that I just think are awesome. 61% of our students are enrolled in a CTE class, and that's last year's data. I think that is incredible.
That's great.
To me, like, looking at things like that and saying, okay, what work can we do? The other thing, I'm just so impressed with seeing what is happening at our schools, and specifically, just all three ladies, but Joy and Laura, just taking on these roles and saying, let's just really go for it. And the internships are only going to help our students. And so we have 32 students right now in fall, and we could highlight them at our next board meeting, and then next semester, we have at least 50 interns.
That's awesome.
So, you know, I think that is something that our workforce in Haywood County and surrounding counties needs to see, that we are offering these opportunities for our kids, and that will also lead to doing apprenticeships for them. So, and that's my other big positive, we had an outstanding business advisory meeting today, and we had 15 businesses come, and they got to share what they are looking for, and, you know, gave us a lot of really good insight of what we need to be doing at our high schools for the kids, too. So, yeah.
That's great.
And then money, 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 I said, I've never thought about money so much in my life until I had this job, was, or is, the grants that we've applied for so far. So we've done the Golden Leaf, and hopefully that will help us get the CDC positions, Joyce Holly and Laura Turner. Um, we've applied for five hundred thousand, so that would be for more than one year. Um, I submitted a home building grant and that's for twenty thousand. And so that's much like the health career exploration, they can use that money kind of anywhere within their programs. They don't really have to build homes or anything. Um, the WNC Bridge Foundation, I just came across that and I know, uh, Mr. Cookett, uh, Pisgah needs a new jointer. And I was like, well, it's ten thousand dollars, so guess what, we're gonna go for this one. So hopefully we'll get that and we should know that in the next two weeks. And then the next one will be the, um, NC Community Foundations Grant. And then we have a few others, we spoke to Duke Energy today about some opportunities there. And, um, I can't think of the other grant. So, yeah, so hopefully money will be coming in. But, um, I think that's, you know, we need to be thinking outside of the box too about what can we do to build the programs at our schools? And maybe we're combining them, um, because we need to be able to offer them the opportunity that they're having, you know.
So like the home building grant, so like the shop teacher could use that for whatever he needed, like supplies, field trips. Building things at the school, I mean, sometimes they're actually like making and doing things for the school.
Yep.
Okay.
So hopefully, and that wouldn't come in, that would be next year, but again, you know, you apply for a lot of these things right now.
Yes.
Hope that you get it and have it for next year.
So would the, would the gold, the golden leaf would be for next year too?
Yes. I imagine we wouldn't know about that for a few months, but. It wasn't due till the end of the month, so I'm, you know.
Okay.
But there are a lot of grants that would come out in the new year too, so I just, again, I obsess.
Just apply, 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 that's good.
Yeah.
See what you can get.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. I'm excited for your, your passion about the program, that's how I feel.
Can I, I, I hate the way the last member just hit me, on the pumping paper, how's that program going? Uh, it's, it's, it's saying two seventy-five and, uh, are we still running that pretty wide open or whatever?
Uh, yes, his classes are still full. He has actually partnered with other places, so they're having to travel a little bit further to do their field trips and stuff. But he has sent us, um, emails when he goes and travels and like, and seeing what the other places are doing. I can't name them off the top of my head, but I could go back to my email and.
I saw a post where they went.
Yeah, they're.
I think there's five facilities, there's Jackson Paper, the Waynesville Plant's still operating two shifts, forty, they've got fifty people. Uh, Jacob Holmes does a familiar, but it's used polyurethane. And then, uh, Kimberly Clark in Harrisville does the tampons, diaper liner, stuff like that, it's polyurethane. And then there's a manufacturer in, uh, West Rock in Harrisville that does displays out of cardboard. So there's five facilities, if they need, I'll talk to Dr., Mr. Godfrey, I used to help him my whole time, bring him stuff. But if he needs any help, I can help him get into those, I know people at every one of those facilities, so I'll be happy to help. Cause I love him anyway, but that's been a great program, my boys loved it, they loved that program, they loved him, so.
He is awesome.
Thanks, I just wanted.
So Charlie, if y'all didn't know, she's like having an AI assistant with you. Everybody needs a Charlie. Just, I told, I was on the phone today and I said, hang on, we'll ask ChatGP Charlie here, so, um.
Charlie GP?
Oh gosh, I love her, she didn't know what she got into when she met me, did you Charlie? We have fun together, and today I was getting ready to say something, and I said, did you already write that down? She goes, y'all knew you were gonna ask for it, I'm just sorry.
She's a mind reader too.
She is, okay, um, we'll switch gears for just a second, um, wanna talk to you about NC Star and school improvement plans. So, um, I'm sorry, first of all, that I was not here at the board meeting. I heard Dr. Putnam did a great job with our, um, presentation of our accountability results. And, and Carly read a message, but I just want you to know that thank you for your support last year of our schools. And thank you for, um, you know, it was a tough year and we all rode through that together. And I think we came out on a really good side of that. And I'm so proud of our people and I feel a renewed sense in our school. And, um, so I'm very, very excited about that. We did, however, as I'm Dr. Putnam, shared with you, we did have three schools who were low performing. And I wanna talk to you about a state designation and a federal designation. I wanna try to make that just what y'all probably would wanna know about that. We have had, um, schools that are in federal improvement, okay? And that is called ATS I, additional targeted support improvement, and improvement. And that is a federal, Charlie handles that, okay? And they're called ATS I schools. And those schools, depending on subgroup data, they can go in and out of that improvement. We do get a little money with that and they have to show gains within their subgroup. And a lot of times it'll be the EC sub-group that doesn't quite meet the federal target or our EL subgroup, um, to give you some examples. But that is a three-year improvement cycle. So if Canton Middle gets put on ATS I, they're in that for three years, okay? And then they have a chance to come out of it and, yeah, okay. And so then, um, no real sanctions to that unless, you know, we don't really know on the inside what the real sanctions are for that. But anyway, okay, the other part that we're focused on tonight, I wanna talk to you about are just low performing schools, okay? That is a state designation. And if yours, if your school does not meet targets within one year and you've missed twenty-one days and that kinda thing happens, then you will, you could be labeled a low performing school, okay? And so we had three schools last year that were labeled low performing. And that was Waynesville Middle School, Clyde and Meadowbrook. And, um, each, there are different components that go into what that is. And I will, Charlie and I, I'm gonna let Charlie explain. We couldn't get T-kick on the phone, but I will give you an example, like for Waynesville Middle, their math letter grade was a C. Their reading letter grade was a C, their science letter grade was a C, but their overall grade was a D, which made them low performing. And the best Charlie and I can tell, um, was their EL subgroup was, um, only made like thirteen point nine percent progress and that really brought them down, okay? So it's not just one thing, okay? So that's based on one year and, and then they, you know, they will come out of that after that one year. It's not forever, does, now ask me questions about that. So you know the difference between a federal and, and then the state? So right next year, our schools that are in state improvement, our D schools are Waynesville Middle, Clyde and Meadowbrook, okay? We have schools that are ATS I, Canton Middle, Bethel Middle, Hazelwood, Waynesville Middle and Clyde. They're already, they're in the federal.
ATS I.
ATS I.
What does that stand for?
Additional Targeted Support Improvement.
And that's for their subgroup, students with disabilities performance, and that's coming next month.
For all the old timers in the room, like there was a, this kinda started with like No Child Left Behind and there were gonna be sanctions and kids were gonna be bust and, and they were gonna be, and that developed when No Child Left Behind, um, ended, that legislation, um, ended. Then this was what was kinda left from it, okay? Is it kinda morphed into this additional target support. So you got those designation, I'm only gonna talk to you tonight, I'm gonna talk to you about our three schools that were low performing last year, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
About the additional targeted support, like, so they're in the three-year program, when did they start?
Okay, they've started at different times.
Okay.
That, like this year, Canton Middle just entered, but they've been in it before and had exited last year and they entered again. Is that correct, Charlie?
They exited two years ago.
Okay.
So they are now cohort three, so Bethel Middle, Canton Middle and Hazelwood just entered because of last year's data. So they are considered cohort three. And then, um, Waynesville Middle and Clyde are cohort two, they have the opportunity to come out this year.
Okay.
This will, this is their third year.
And I don't have this in front of me, but Charlie might know, but what gets in ATS I, it'll be a subgroup. So like, I know Canton Middle's with students with disabilities.
All of them are students with disabilities and it's if, if they have an F for three years, two of the last three years.
In any subgroup.
In any subgroup and it's.
Like the math, the science, the ML, the students with disabilities, if they have an F. And generally, it's our students with disabilities subgroup that, and we're really working on that, so. But the flip side of that, our students with disabilities make really good growth on the EVOs side, but we won't get into all that. We're gonna talk about Waynesville, Clyde and Meadowbrook. What other questions you have about them and I'm gonna go into their improvement plans?
Does the state come in and provide any additional health benefit when, once they go into this, these state plans?
They will, like I said, there are some additional funds, not huge funds, not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, through NC Star, and I'm gonna explain that program. I don't know that you would consider that the kinda support you're saying, like if they send people in and coaches know they don't, no, we don't.
No, it's up to the district to monitor it until we become a CSI, which hopefully we don't. But that's a continuously, that we are, we are in that category continuously for a three-year span.
And is that when they come in and send?
That's when they would come in and, and monitor versus the district monitoring.
Central Haywood has been a CSI school before and then you do get a, a lot of money. So Wendy has done that, those are great questions. Okay, so now the part, okay? Um, in November, we will bring to you part of, um, is, part of this, you know, is informing people and communicating well with communities and parents. And so, and you will have to improve their plan of improvement, their school improvement plan. If you remember, a year ago, y'all improved, you approved their school improvement plans, they're on a two-year cycle, okay? And they, and I love school improvement planning, you know, we, we value our stakeholder input that, they did a really good job on that. And we do that, we have our own way of doing that within our district and they've done those and they've updated them, okay? However, the state has to report it to the federal government in a different way. They're not gonna take our school improvement plan. So it has to be imported into a system that everybody in the state uses, okay? And that system is called NC Star, okay? Like Pisgah High School, for instance, does not use NC Star. But Canton Middle this year will have to use NC Star, okay? Because they've entered, if your ATS I are low performing, your school improvement plan has to be entered into NC Star and the board has to approve the NC Star plan, okay? So tonight, I'm focused on Waynesville, Clyde and Meadowbrook and just to talk to you about those and give you a month or so, you know, till we meet again, to look over and call and ask me questions or the schools if you want to. Within your, um, if you'll open your folder, and let's just look at Meadowbrook, um, you'll have two plans for Meadowbrook, okay? And this'll just be easy, this one that I have, that's got the blue Haywood County Schools emblem on it. This is the one that, that they do in their school that we use in the district that you have approved, okay? And there's, I will let them make slight modifications on it in the summer or put data in and y'all don't go back and approve that. If they re-hall the whole thing, I'll, we'll bring it back to y'all and I think I did that, um, one year. But this is there and you can go through and read their plan that has been approved. And they have gone in this year and also added, like, um, they've added the NC Star indicators on this also, okay? This is not what gets inputted, inputted into the, um, the state database, okay? This is just our, their individual school plan. What they have to do now is, they have to take this and they have to put it into a program on a computer, NC Star, okay? Charlie has printed it out for you, which is really nice, but the public has a access code. Every school has to post it where they can go in and look at it too, okay? And this has to be posted on their, their website and we can give y'all access to it too. But this is a hard copy that Charlie printed out for y'all, so you would have it. So they, this is to me, the NC Star program that has to be submitted to the federal government, it's very broad, okay? Ours is, ours drills down very specific. And the reason, we could use this, am I getting in too deep here, are y'all with me? Okay, so we could use this one, um, for all school improvement plan and never do this. But to me, this is really hard, it's a lot of indicators within that and we had a principal, say today. I would be trying to, I'm trying, she's trying to look for indicators that fit her plan, okay? If we didn't do that, we would just have people going in and checking this, does that make sense? Like it's really, it's really bad, they, I think our principals agree with that too, they really like doing it this way. But now, if they're ATS I or low performing, they do have to go in and put it in this document. And it has to be approved by you, okay, in November, okay? What questions you have about that, I hope that was as, was that clear for you? I know it's a little complicated.
So this is more, this is the plan that they're.
This is what I talk to them about and meet with them.
They're following, they have their own.
Yes.
School, Haywood County Schools plan.
They do.
They have to set this up to meet the quality.
Yeah, and it, it's.
Meet the criteria for.
The federal government and, you know, and we have really done good about marrying those, so you should see the same things. But look, call me, call the principals and ask them questions if you have. They also had to send a letter out to their parents and I've got a copy of the letters, but I will just briefly let you know. Um, you know, at Clyde Elementary, they had to talk to the parents about the, their plans to improve. Um, they said, we're already working hard to improve student learning. Um, our plan includes strengthening reading skills through programs like foundations, UFLI, Haggerty, CKLA, dedicated intervention time with support from Title I tutors and instructional assistance. And so each school detailed that out, this one's to Mount, um, Waynesville families, Dear Mountie families, our plan to improve. And a big part of Waynesville Middle's on here too, they got a golden leaf grant, Charlie and I said, we're the district, um, reps for that. And we said in a meeting today about that, they are getting, you know, a lot of instructional coaching through this golden leaf grant. It's also freed up a little time and Maggie, um, some resources like to get more coaching in and people that we already contract with. So I think that's gonna help, um, she said, another big thing that, that Ms. Emma and I really like is like proficiency scales aligned to standards to help evaluate mastery of concepts and skills. This is throughout that grant, what they're teaching teachers to do over the course of that three-year grant at Waynesville Middle is, you've got this standard, how do you know a kid's proficient at it? How, what are the benchmarks within that standard that you can tell that kid knows it? And that's just really good pedagogy instruction for any school. And we want Maggie to be able to share that out too with our other middle schools, cause it's good for all of them. So each of these letters details that, um, Meadowbrooks. Students are supported in reading through Haggerty, foundations, GOs, PALS, CKLA, taught with fidelity, a daily foundations block, strengthens foundational reading skills, instruction is guided by the Haywood County Literacy Plan. And so, um, a Title I instructional coach supports teachers with planned instruction. And I'm just kind of hitting the high spots there to let you know, these letters have been sent out to our families already. It is, um, these are open for public comment right now before, that's why I wanted to get it in your hands cause you can make comments, you know, call me, we can talk next time, um, principals, whatever, the public does have access to this too now. So they can make comments and at the next board meeting, I'll be asking you to approve the NC Star plans.
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
And I know we've approved these in the past, but just to make sure everybody's clear on, once a school does these plans, do they give them to you to sort of go over and make sure that they're checking the boxes and say, well, you know, you need to add more to this or take this away or, who, who's the final sort of.
Well, that's a great question.
Group that approves these before you bring them to us?
Yeah, and I think Graham, you know, he did that with me as a principal too, but I think, um, it is, it is their school and they have to understand that. What I do is I take it and look at it and say, hey, you know what, Charlie has some data on attendance. Get that data from her and add it in there, where do you wanna be? Yes, I do coach them, okay? The, the cool thing that Dr. Putnam has done is he has taken the principals, cause I'm a big school improvement plan believer, okay? I, I'm big on this, okay, like they know it. But Dr. Putnam has really come in with their, their, their professional development plan. And when they come in and they say, well, I've got this goal, if it's nowhere on that school improvement, how does that tie together? And he's really had them tie that together and the data tied together and we're getting better at that because of that. Like they're really plans, they're not something that sits on the shelf. That answer your question, I monitor them throughout the year, I go meet with them at the beginning of the year, let's talk about your plan. Um, the middle of the year, I go out, how's it going? Usually in the summer, we may talk a little bit about it or something, you know, make sure you change anything you wanna change. This year, we'll be revising completely. So there is a follow-up with me, I do follow up with them on it, yes. What other questions you, just call me.
Do they, do they, do the teams, like, I know you list who's on the team, like, did they have a reg, meet at a reg, on a regular basis?
They are required by law to meet once a month, their agendas have to be documented. Um, the school improvement teams are required by law to meet once a month. School improvement teams are required by law to meet once a month.
Okay. Is that only if they're, like, in, you know, in low scoring, or all the te, all the school improvement?
All schools, yes, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and if you get it and you're reading the plans, you're just interested or have a question, call us, and we'll be glad to answer anything you got.
And we vote on this next month?
Next, November, we can vote on that. And then in November, to just, Ms. Himmann will be bringing the schools that are ATS I and their improvement plans, and then you'll have to approve those too. And you won't have to approve three of them, 'cause you already approved those in, I mean, I'm already doing those. You'll have two more, three more.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks y'all so much, and just wanted you to have it so you could look at it.
Very informative.
All right, that leads to our facility assessment.
Can we talk about a two-minute break, bathroom break, two to three minutes? Thank you. Someone's been sitting here for an hour already.
This is delicious, Michelle.
So we can be proactive instead of reactive to things, which I think will be phenomenal. And then secondly, and maybe most importantly, with the findings that they've got in there, paired with the suggestions that you all had at the last work session, give us some recommendations to move forward and what we really need to do. Ultimately, of course, it's y'all's decision what we do, but some recommendations with, you know, facts behind it as to what to do next. So I think it'll be really good. With that, I'll turn it over to our Clark next and CDC team. Also want to say Reese Noel McElrath did a lot with this too. There's nobody here from that team, but they put in a lot of work too. And so we're appreciative of them for that as well. So here's David.
Here's David. I wish when I walked home, that's the reception I got, but no. My kids, I'm going to start that with my children. Thank you so much. And I appreciate the kind words and we just want to say how much of an honor it's been to work with you all. Our company has a long relationship with the county and we're just really grateful for that. I know that Chanel and Patrick and Joe and I have really enjoyed the work. So thank you. On a personal note, my father was a school superintendent in New York State. He was a teacher first and then a superintendent his whole career. So I also personally enjoy this work. It means a lot. So thank you very much. We're going to walk through what we've done. And there's been, there is a link that you all have. If you haven't gotten to check it out yet, you can after this meeting, which will show you the same thing that we're going to show you all today. And what we're very excited about and will be transparent with you all, you all are our first client to receive our assessments in this format. So instead of the 200-page PDF that has a lot of value, but is a little tougher to get through, you all are our first client. We're using the software called Power BI to put all this information in a way that the school district can interact with and download information from and sort and should be a tool that lasts a very, very long time. So with that, I'll show you how this works. So there is a homepage and there are detailed pages for each school. And it's not our intention today to walk through the like absolute details of each thing. We want to, what we're hoping to model today is how this tool will help you all. And by that, we'll describe a few things. So this is the entire county. This represents, this is showing you the, it's the face of the database of all the information that we've entered in. And it is showing in the upper left, the total cost of deficiencies that we identified across the entire district. That's in today's dollars. And to the right, it has replacement costs. Now, the way we're going to go through this today, we're going to start with sort of showing this information. I'll call that the first half. And then the second half, Patrick's going to come on up here and we're going to talk about the replacement costs, ideas about Canton Middle and the ball fields that directly address the five strategic planning goals that you all set last time. That'll be the second part. But this first part is just to show how this works. If you were to look at the bottom, scroll down a little bit. So it lists every school and it has some key metrics on every school. I'm just going to focus on one for now. And that is in the middle, there's a column called DPI building average score. So the DPI, I would say if, but when they give you guys a needs-based grant to help build one of these schools. I have no, I have no connections on that front, but I'm just putting it down in the meeting minutes. So it'll happen for you all. But when that happens and they gave you the money, the first thing they would ask you all to do is to use this building score program that they have to identify whether the building should be completely replaced or it should be completely renovated. So what we've done is go ahead and use that as a team to score all the buildings. So what will be great about that is when you do go to apply, assuming you do apply for a needs-based grant, you already have this information to base it on. And you can say, we would like to do, we'd like to pick this option and we'd like this school to be new or we'd like it to be renovated. And you'll all be able to prove to them immediately that that's the right choice. You can see, for example, a lot of the newer schools score extremely well. Top of the list, that's a 22 out of 26. That's about as good as it gets. And we all wondered how Canton Middle would score. We're not knocking on Canton Middle today, but it got a nine out of 26. The point is just that the metrics back up what you, they clearly back up the decisions y'all are prepared to make about Canton Middle. There are other, the next column scores the site the same way. And that's another thing. It's important to point out if in some, you all already identified last time that that site's too small, but let's just say you had said, we'd like to put a new Canton Middle on that site. You'll see that site also scored in the red and you all know why. It's just too small. So that's kind of the summary of this. It lists information about every school, but what we just wanted to focus on here was that DPI score. We're going to go into the details for one school now. At the top of the page, you can go to school details, pick any school. We just thought we'd pick Pisgah. And we'll walk you through this. So in the upper left are the total deficiency costs in today's dollars. There's actually a slider that we built in. You can change the year. Because if you're really looking at a 10-year capital improvement plan, let's say however long of a plan y'all pick, you wouldn't, you need to plan out in the dollars for which year you'll be doing the work. So that's all built in. By the way, everything you see on the screen at any point can all be exported to an Excel document or printed to PDF instantly by the team. That's one of the great things about this tool. You sort this however you want to and just print. We have been asked to price what they call priority level one and priority level two deficiencies. The one thing we aren't going to show you today, there is indeed for each school, a 80-page or so PDF with pictures of every one of these deficiencies, which is great. So the team has, the team can hand that to each individual school and say, hey, here was your list. Well, that list contains a bunch of what we call P3 deficiencies, priority three. Those are things like, we need to pick the, fix the carpet here in the corner. You all engaged us to do that and we did it. But that's the kind of thing that the school district can handle with their own maintenance staff. What we priced were priority level one and two. And simply level one is like, there's a life safety violation or there's a code violation, or you have like an active water leak in your building. They're the things that you would want to plan for in the next one to three years, best you can to complete. We all need, we all need to, when we have a list like this, we all have to prioritize. So that's P1. And then the level two are just those things that are not life safety. They're not code. But they're things that we would recommend be done in the next three to five years, three to seven years. They're usually items that if they aren't addressed by that point, they might start to cause a leak, for example. You know, you might need to, we won't get into too many of these semi-boring details, but it might be that you need to recock all the windows in the building. Well, you don't do it, need to do it now, but we're not doing our job if we don't tell you, you should do it in the next 10 years. Otherwise, you're going to have a problem. So it sorts them into priority level one and two. And these items range anywhere from, you should, this is on the list, you should put a panic device, we call it, like an exit device on these doors because it's an assembly space for $2,000. Not that that's not real money, but they range anywhere from that to you, this is a building where the HVAC systems need to be replaced. So it's just, everything's in there. And for every one of these items, it lists the item and they're sorted and it has a description and it has our recommendations and it has costs in today's dollars. We've costed everything. Any questions so far? I'm about halfway through the tour. Level one is the, is the next one to three years is the recommendation. Now, I know in speaking with Graham, the county's been through just about everything, the list already. Not necessarily processed it and decided what to do with it since we just got it to them. But they can speak to the fact that they've been through that list. So I think that's our recommendation. And then the county will also take that list and prioritize it themselves, I would say.
When you say the county, are you talking about?
Yes, please.
His county?
County schools, county schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify that.
No, thank you. I will.
I do have a question. Like when we pull it up and it says up here that Pisgah has a deficit of $6,389,764, is that the money that would take to fix all the?
Yes, yes.
Everything that's priced.
For that school.
P1 and P2s, that gets all of them. It does not get the P3s, which are the more longer, you know, more future items, but the more near-term things is what accumulates that number.
So then the circle you was talking about, you can estimate years out if you decide to do it. That's what you was talking about, that move?
Yeah, if you change that to 2028.
Add that number to the right.
Yes. Yeah, the total.
A lot of people, sometimes they're like, well, okay, we'll fix it two years down the road. And you're saying, okay, it's going to cost 15,000 now. In four years, it's going to cost 50,000. So you never decide when you're going to bite the bullet.
That's right. Yeah.
I think it's a tricky detail, I believe. But Joe, David, I think I'm correct. When you slide that escalation bar, Mr. Kirkpatrick, it bumps the cost over on the right-hand side. It does not change that total. But the right-hand side is moving as that bar slides.
And it shows there that it's an 8% annual increase is what that price escalation is.
Yeah.
Is on target.
Yeah, that's been a good average.
We just roughed the one off of it.
Correct. The next thing that we wanted to mention is, we double-checked the numbers today. Of all the deficiency costs across all the schools, about 50% of them are plumbing, mechanical, and electrical work. So it's a great metric to have. And if you're ever just sitting to yourself thinking, okay, I know this particular school well, or you, I know these five schools well, whatever the case may be, what are these costs? So a lot of this, in a lot of the schools, the PME makes up about 50% because a lot of the HVAC systems, for example, are what we call end of life. So we want to clarify what that means. And what that means is that, for example, a particular description might say, this system's been in place for 20 years. Technically, the manufacturer says its service life is 15 years or 18 years. So our recommendation is, and here's the cost to do it, that you would need to replace these systems. Now, it's a real recommendation. Will that system last another five to 10 years? It might. It might not. And that is about as frustratingly vague as end of life means. But without being patronizing at all, I think any of us who are homeowners know what that means, right? We have, we'll have something at home. We're grateful, very grateful when it lasts longer than they said it would. And sometimes it does. I know, that just happened to me. We had to redo our HVAC at the house and the gentleman pulled off the faceplate and he was looking at the thing. And I said, does that say that our simple little split system is 25 years old? He's like, it does. I'm like, well, I'm not going to complain. Whatever costs, you tell me to replace this thing, I think I need to not complain.
I bet you the next one won't last that 25 years.
No, I don't think so. But the truth is, you have a lot of buildings that have scored extremely well, 22 out of 26. If we were to bring up the sheet, honestly, a shockingly low amount of deficiencies. The county schools is maintaining the buildings very, very well. But in a building like that, the, the main HVAC systems might be at the end of their life. And that's where a bulk of the costs are that we're showing. And it's a real thing to plan around. Absolutely. I, I, that's a great question. The tool right now doesn't list the building's ages. We have a. Well, Joe, do you want to try to find that particular one? Waynesville Middle, it is, right?
WMS.
WMS.
So if you, if we go to the W, the Waynesville Middle, and we're going to try to find that priority. Is it a level one? Yeah. No, that's great.
Building C.
Building C.
Oh, I see it over here. Okay.
Building C.
Right there.
That's the main building. That's the front entrance.
Okay.
With the gym.
Okay.
But now the gym, it goes back to like the 50s and 60s. It was a separate part. So it's really just the lobby.
Would it burn? They add it on.
All over to the library. You can back down.
And what that recommendation is saying is that the system that they're recommending replacing, that system is 30 years old. Yeah, that's, yeah. And then, right, the context of how old the building is, we just need to chase that down. We have it. Okay?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Does it take into effect that there may be some, like, sorry? Like hazardous, like asbestos flooring or stuff that's old that needs to be taken out and is, you know, I guess the hazardous abatement, is that stuff considered?
It would, but we have very little, if any, abatement on the deficiencies, very few because of the amount of abatement the schools have already done.
Okay. It's good to know.
Okay. And the last thing on deficiencies, if we're, we're going to go back to Pisgah. There are a few deficiencies that are labeled as zero-dollar costs. It's just a note that if you see that, what that usually means is we've recommended that the school district, for example, hire a structural engineer to just do an additional analysis, something that we could not do on our own. And so we can't then say how much we think it would cost. Or, and there are not many of those, but that's one of our final steps. We're going to have a meeting upcoming where we just go through the zero-dollar ones and see if we want to move ahead with engaging someone to do a little more work there. And then we could put costs in for you all. They're not, I don't want to scare you. They're not like immediate problems or we would have hired someone already. But there's, there are things that we need to get another, our structural engineer engaged to finalize. If we want to scroll back up, so the last, so all the deficiencies again are listed for every school. I'm going to, I don't want to take us in the detail right now, but on each of these school pages, you can get additional detail on the DPI building score. And, but we're kind of getting into the weeds on that and I'll do that if you guys want me to, but we're going to skip that for a minute. If we go back to the county, any other questions on deficiencies?
David, one, one that I have.
Yes, please.
Might be out there. So when we see on the left, the deficiencies, and we know that those are the priority one and priority two, in this case, 6.3 million. But we move over to the right of the replacement cost of 12.1. What's the difference in those two numbers? Because obviously, we can't replace a Pisgah High School for $12 million.
It's funny you should ask. That was the, almost as if that was the next item on my agenda. If we can go, sorry, I'm in, it's late. I'm in that mood right now, but more serio, let me, let me be serio, let me, let me be serious. So if we go back to the county insights, we're going to sort the schools. The last thing we want to mention at a high level, we're going to sort here by replacement recommendations. So Canton Middle School, we'll start with that one. We're recommending a full replacement. That's what DPI would recommend. And we just want to point out that the reason this school only shows $60,000 in deficiencies is a judgment call was made that it was not worth pricing individual deficiencies when the, the school, right, the school district and the board have all identified replacing that school as a priority. The few items that we have priced are those life safety type things that we're recommending do, do happen because we know the school won't be built by next year. Then the partials, if we can start with, let's go back to Waynesville Middle. So the ones that show partial, if we go to Waynesville Middle, we'll have to go up, Joe, to the school details, right? Waynesville Middle, and then go to replacement costs. There, there's always detail about that. So Patrick, here's your answer. So for example, at Waynesville Middle, there are two buildings, buildings A and D, that when you score them for that DPI score sheet, they fall under the, if you're going to completely renovate or replace these buildings, you should replace them. We're not saying you need to replace them. And we're not saying they need to be completely renovated. Okay? This is again, a tool just to say, yeah, those couple buildings are in the kind of condition that if you had, and we've estimated what the cost would be to renovate completely, or I'm sorry, to replace just those two buildings, if you chose to spend that $23 million on a school, you would replace buildings A and D. You would not renovate them. Does that answer your question? So that's what that means. Similarly, we don't even need to bring it up, but at both Pisgah and Tuscola, the, what I call, what we call the lobby, I don't know what you call it, but between the gym and the, I first knew it from when my sons went. Thank you. Yeah, I know it from, I know it from all district band tryouts. But anyway, so that building and the library building where you see that all the, somewhat obviously, all the main structural wood beams are deflecting, they're all Boeing. So again, we're not saying the student, you can't use those buildings. But what we are saying is those, those buildings really should be replaced. I mean, if you were going to invest this, any significant amount of money in either Pisgah or Tuscola, you would, you would replace those. Because by the time you tried to fix that entire structural system that's holding up the roof, you would spend nearly as much money as you would to replace them. So if we go back to the homepage.
That's correct. It's A building and then the lobby there in between the cafeteria because they've got those same wood beams.
Yeah. So if we go back to the county insights page and again, sort by the, there we go. So that covers Canton, Waynesville, Pisgah, and Tuscola. And you can see again, the theme of what we're just saying is the way the state, what the state would recommend is if you're going to do something about those individual buildings, you would replace them and not renovate them. And the last one was Bethel Middle. Can we go to the details of that? This one is a little different. It's, it's something that we should have put on here. And you asked us to, but it's also really the price to replace the portions of Bethel Middle that are unoccupied now. Because again, if you're asking us to do our job well, we have to come back and tell you those buildings that are unoccupied, that you're taking parts from, from mechanical systems to fix other parts, good decision. But those buildings are not going to last another 10 years as they are without deteriorating. So we're saying this is what it would be cost to replace those. This one's kind of unusual because y'all might be thinking, well, we're never going to replace those. Fair enough. But that's, so that takes you through each of the replacement. And then what we're going to do in part two here of this presentation is talk a little more about Canton Middle and some replacement options. But any other questions about this tool or what it represents?
Powerful tool. We use it in our, in my company uses Power BI. It's good. I like it.
Great. We just really hope it's just useful. I can't tell you how many conversations we had. I can hear Chanel and Joe. And Chanel and Joe, Patrick repeatedly saying, I just want this to be useful. So.
You said this is something we can use for, for years to come. If we replace some plumbing or electrical at one of these schools, can we go in and update this information so the numbers will change? Or is, is that, is that possible?
Great question. So the way it's set up right now is the schools have a license, it's a yearly license that, that we have given y'all to access this. And so that just is, I wouldn't say in perpetuity, but basically. But the, the data that drives all this is, was done by our in-house data team. So I think one of the things to talk about moving forward is, let's say it's two, three years down the road, and the school district realizes, boy, it'd be great to go in here and start knocking off the list of things that we've done. I mean, we, we could, we would find a way to work with you on that. Right now, the tool's not, there's no checkbox. You can click in the tool to say something's been done. Yeah, because it, not to get in the weeds, but it pulls from a giant data set, spreadsheets and that kind of thing. But it could be done. And that's a great point is we sat, we thought, well, I wonder if they'll want to do that. But we didn't want to run this too far without talking to y'all and find out what's really useful. But absolutely, we would love to partner with y'all in a couple of years. If you thought this tool could be useful that way, we will, we will figure it out. Yeah, we would love to. Okay.
So good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. And to follow up on Graham's remarks, while we appreciate the, the kind words, school staff, I mean, we were in every school. We took maintenance staff's time, Zach, and numerous others, the principals, other key folks at each place. I mean, it was, it was a heavy lift on their part on certain days. So that should not go underappreciated as they're trying to do their job. Because we were trying to get them largely done before they went out for summer break. So they were, we were avoiding testing days and all those kinds of things to make it happen. But they were super to work with. So springboarding off of the last time we were here together, and I can't recall what month that was, but I want to think it was probably April, May-ish, somewhere in there? Was it? Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was June.
Okay. So we were kind of brainstorming and trying to draw out of y'all, you know, what are your priorities? What are these three to five things that, you know, if you just had to put something out there today, and obviously Canton Middle was discussed there, the ball fields in the eastern part of the county, you know, that serve the Canton Middle and Pisgah populations were part of that discussion. We talked, I think, a little about, you know, should we peek at, you know, the idea of consolidating, you know, a school or two if we see a population versus a square footage that's just kind of out of whack, if you will, you know. So I want to preface and tell you a couple of things here, not nearly as sophisticated as is Power BI of what you're going to see right here. But we just took the, with, with staff's input and admin's input, we looked at the idea of, okay, let's, let's throw a number on there for if, if we went and found a piece of property, you know, so we've had to make an assumption. We haven't designed a site, if you will. But just on the presumption, if we found a large tract of land, applied some reasonable site cost to it, looked at the ideologies at a high level of building ball fields, if you will. So you're going to, we're going to walk through a few different scenarios. I think there's a total of four here. Again, they're not a matter of preference as we're saying, you should work in this way. You're going to see some combo kind of things on here. But we wanted to start to speak to you in that way, particularly as you go into the, the idea of a replacement realm, you know. And like I say, as we look at Canton Middle's score, it certainly falls in that realm, you know. We know the site's not good. We know the, the building itself's not good. So we're largely looking for property in all realities and building. These are all in today's dollars, if you will. So they don't have the, the slick sliding bar, but, but they can be escalated as we talk about that going forward. So the first one you see, so just simple descriptions, this is a new Canton Middle School, along with a site, if we could find it, to accommodate five new ball fields that would be shared between Canton Middle and Pisgah. So it's two baseball, two softball, and a football. So, it's two baseball, two softball, and a football field. So, we just wanted to be rather presumptive, not suggestive, if you will, about what that might look like, but, you know, the right piece of property, some could argue, well, we could do it in less than 51 acres, some would argue, well, you know, we're gonna need 100 acres, you know, because all the properties steep, but, you know, using some tools, some things that we do, we're doing a pretty similar school to what we've laid out here in Ash County right now, and it's not nearly flat, you know, around in this 50 acre realm, you know, you can start to make a dent in some of these larger flat spaces, so. With that said, and you can do the straight extrapolation of a lot of these things, 51 acres, we threw $100,000 an acre at the land cost, you know, that's gonna be depending on, obviously, the seller at any given location, but, but you know that, so I'm not gonna restate that again. Site work costs and athletic fields, so this is grading, paving, generally, the assumption is here that we would find a site with municipal water and sewer to it. We did not run it up so far as to do a well and onsite septic. Obviously, this would support some of that cost, but probably wouldn't get us 100% there, because those costs have, have certainly increased along with everything else. Back to more of a square footage realm, and just to give you a split, I'm gonna go back up to that $20 million line item that you see for site work and athletic fields, roughly speaking, roughly speaking, about 16 million of that supports the school, the parking, the bus routes, all those things that are kind of infrastructure to the school. The beauty of this, and you'll see it versus like Alternative Four when we get there, is you get to kinda share a decent parking field with the athletic fields, so to speak, so that kinda helps on the athletic fields, keep that number down. We look at one in a minute, that's athletic fields alone, well, then you gotta go build a parking lot, and you gotta go build concessions and bathrooms that you don't have the benefit of potentially using if you had an, an adjacent school site, so, so just kinda food for thought, but high level assumptions. You're seeing the middle school cost at $415 a square foot, you know, and this pulled down to 76,000 square feet. Clark Nixon took a look at, you know, the student population, the ranges, that's how that's developed, and I'm going into more detail on this first one, because the other three are pretty complimentary to it. Then the next line down is FFNE, so that's all the stuff, if you picked up the building and shook it, that would fall out of it, right? We gotta have desks and chairs and technology and all those kind of things, you know, that's a real number, $40 a square foot, and then just thinking about construction contingency, soft costs, we gotta have, you know, we gotta pay us, we gotta pay the MEP folks, all the designers, all the permits, all those kind of things, so, just looking down that path.
Surveys.
Surveys, yeah, soil testing, you know, all of that kind of front end pre-construction stuff, if you will. So, sum total, you know, of a walking around sense, middle school, you know, we're $68 million and change, you know, can we get the property a little less than that? I don't know that, might have to pay a little more for the right piece of property, you know, but that's a, that's a sensibility, so I'm gonna call a quick pause right there, just for this ideology, making sense, lost in the distance, or seeming about right, kinda, kinda hitting the mark. Yes, sir?
If I can ask a question?
Sure.
So, in plugging in these numbers, like taking the land, for example, you've plugged in 100,000 per acre, that's because that's what you're seeing, that's current market?
On favorable tracks of a decent size with access to water and sewer, $100,000 is not out of line in the county.
I just wanted to point that out, you're not, you're using market rate.
That's correct, yeah.
Assuming apples to halves.
Yeah, the most of what we've seen that's occupying this type and style of property in the county right now has been housing, but just the same, you know, that's a, I think.
Competing with the same people.
The market is the market, right? You know, so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and similarly, oh yeah, similarly, we're, we have a lot of historical data on the school costs, but we also are blessed to have a few in the office right now, so like, we just opened bids on Ash County Middle School, and so these are also real costs. We have, we have both the historical data that would lead us to the same number anyway, and we have a recent project, so.
We don't have a link to this, do we?
Do not.
Okay, no, it's fine.
We've got it in PDF.
Okay, no, it's fine, I was.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just making sure it wasn't something, I was trying to click on this little CDC button. It's fine, like, I was just seeing if I could see it from here.
So that is, like I say, just kinda walking around, is a new middle school and five accompanying ball fields, you know, to give you a sensibility. Could we pull it off for 62, might it be 75? I think we're getting in the ballpark.
As far as the ball fields, are you also considering, are you also considering like tennis courts and other, yeah, things?
Right now, we've largely considered the five that have been so flood prone, if you will, was kind of our takeaway and target here, Jim.
Patrick, at $415 a square foot, what type of building is that representing? Is that representing metal structure, is that representing brick and mortar, what, what are we talking there?
I'm gonna let David take that.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're good.
That's a great question.
Yeah, that's representing like a multi-level, if needed, brick.
Okay.
Type of building, something.
So we're talking a nice building?
Yeah. Something we think y'all would be proud of and happy of, and not upset at us that we spent too much money on it.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Half kidding, but half serious, right?
Right, no.
So, yeah, we're, we're trying to empower you to build something nice y'all will be proud of, but not something you don't need.
Would it be similar like to Bethel Elementary School, on that type of, or would it be?
Yeah, absolutely.
On that same layout? That's a nice school, in my opinion, but I may.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was trying to think of the most recent, I mean, Ash County Middle was not built yet, so you wouldn't see it. We did what's called the Innovative High School on the Blue Ridge Community College Campus, if you've ever seen that. We did Edneyville Elementary down in Henderson County. Those are a couple we've done most recently.
Do you got shots of those projects? Would you share them with us?
Yeah, yeah, we could.
You'd give you comparable type of construction?
Yeah, give me, give me a week or so, and what we'll do is, yeah, pull up some of the most recent K-12 projects we've done. Sure, absolutely.
Are you thinking of going up or out? Like, I think in the Blue Ridge, is that one, isn't it more of a?
Really probably be driven by the site, once we have a piece of land, you know, it's largely, largely cheaper to build on one story if we can.
Okay.
Sometimes the site just takes us to, you know, we gotta do another story or two, you know, and two, it depends on the facility. You know, you can do things in high schools and middle schools that you can't really do at elementary, you know, kind of thing, so.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a if, then, and maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I like it.
So like I say, a ton of assumption here, a ton of assumption.
Roughly, population of that 76,000 square feet, 450 or?
Chanel, do you remember the, the school population we were working on for Canton? I think it was about 460 today, Canton Middle, but we scaled it to about the mid 500s or so? So we put some growth in that, and those are rough, Chuck, but they're gonna be.
Just rough.
They're gonna be pretty close.
I understand that, that's fine.
And those, those square footages, those square footages all come from a matrix, also from the DPI. If you're gonna build a middle school, and it has a core capacity of this, or this, or this, or this, and you go right down the chart, and it will give you this estimated size, so.
If you've not been through this process, it's pretty well dictated what square footage is designated for each student. For those that haven't been in that construction, a lot of us have.
Yeah.
This one does not allow for the possibility of combining Canton Middle and Bethel Middle.
But a great segue.
Okay. We got an option for that.
We'll, we'll get you paid after the meeting.
Okay. I'll take my tips.
So, if we could flip to Alternative Two, is just what Ms. Morris just mentioned, is let's look at the idea of a new middle school that would accommodate Canton and Bethel's populations with some high site growth, if you will, not dramatic, but, you know, another 150 or so students beyond where they are today, and at their current populations. So very much the same thing, you got a little bigger student population, you're gonna have a little bigger school by 30,000 or so square feet, you need a little more acreage, the ball fields, that number's largely about the same number, but your site's gotten bigger, so your site work cost went up, you're just encumbering more property, if you will. Still running at the same per square foot cost for the type of construction for a middle school. You'll see a little difference in a moment, when we talk about a high school possibility, that, that number actually etches up a little more, because there's additional cost with things you put in a high school that are not necessary in the middle school, and David and his team can speak a little more to that, but just kinda walking down, so, you know, the idea is, and what we hope you can take from this a little bit is, you know, we know that, you know, we've got, I guess what one would describe as an underutilized facility, maybe is a fair statement, at Bethel Middle, you know, we've got buildings not occupied, that kind of thing, you know, well, if you looked at a true replacement cost of it versus this combo, you know, well, the savings is if you did this option somewhere, you're avoiding those sunk costs in a renovation or replacement there at the existing site, so to speak, you know, so there's, like I say, this is almost kinda like a Tetris game, right? You know, there's innumerable possibilities, you know, as to how, how many ways you can extrapolate this, you know, but compare some purposes, you know, it's like the difference in 68 and 85 million dollars, you know, so, what's that, about 18 million dollars or so, if my math and public's right, you know, to, you know, kinda get you to that place, you know, of, and so at that point, you've effectively, for 18 million more dollars, replaced a middle school that, you know, might also need to be replaced at some point.
Well, and does, does any of this take in, like when we're talking about this particular model, does it take in, into consideration the savings, instead of operating two separate schools, now we're operating one?
We have not delved into that, you know, like the, we need one principal, not two, you know, those kind of things, so this is more just.
Instead of 18, that million dollars being the difference, I mean, that can drastically go down when you start looking at the savings.
Yeah, yeah, because it's heat and air cost, it's water and sewer cost, it's, you know, just the general day-to-day maintenance cost, you know, so, yeah. Now, there is a life cycle kind of analysis out there as well, this is more just the, what gets you to turn the key, if you will, and get you in the door.
What I would just add is that, a, a lot of what we try to do when we pick these options is just to represent, have the options represent something, and Patrick hit that very well at the end. The main, to me, one of the main points of this is just to show that you would get two schools for only that additional 18 million dollars, right? So, you want these alternatives and options, I think you wanna walk away with them making sense why we even put them up there. Now, what's not our job at all is to say whether you should combine Canton and Bethel, and that, that's not the intention of this, it's just, when we're kicking around ideas, we're like, well, but it would be a lot less expensive than 60 million times two, so let's put that up there just to kinda get that thought process going. It's of course, up to all of y'all in this room, and not us, which of these alternatives, frankly, make any sense to you at all, right? But you, you wanna walk away and go, well, I understand why we did Alternative Two, because it saves a lot of money. That's, that's really the point of that one.
Come on, though. Absolutely.
Question, man, I'm the question, man.
You're good.
Do, do any of these take in consideration, let's say that Bethel has enough land for us to use to come back to build this facility, and I mean, that would save $5 million in paring a piece of land, so are you looking at current sites and whether we can utilize those current sites to potentially do any of these suggestions that you brought to?
So, Jim, I can't remember if you were here when we were here in June.
Yeah, I was not here.
So we kinda walked through that, we've got a segregate sheet that we kind of looked at those residual acreage pieces, and while there are some parts and pieces that might support an addition or an ancillary use, there is not, without wiping a site clean from, from its existing use, a real opportunity laying out there for, oh yeah, well, we could just move over here and plant a new school, if you will. You know, I, individually, in, in that case, you know, let's say that we collectively came to an agreement that, that Bethel Middle just needed to be wiped out, but it's got a viable land area, it's still also absent of city water and city sewer, you know, so if that's an ideology that, you know, we wanna kinda move towards, then, you know, that also makes that site struggle a little bit.
Well, and the demo cost of the current structures.
That's right.
Would be astronomical.
Yeah.
Well, and you're also, it says on here, there's only 18 acres of develop, like, of acreage that's, that you can develop at Bethel Middle School, so that doesn't meet the criteria for how many acres you need.
Yeah, particularly with the ball field options rolled in, you know, so we're trying to kinda combine those to some of these to, kinda speaking to things that y'all said then, you know, it was, hey, this is important, this could be, you know, near-term priority, if you will. But yeah, you know, for better or worse, if we had all of those residual pieces immediately adjacent to one another, we'd have something to work with, you know. If we went and scraped Junealuska Elementary, for instance, we'd have, you know, a player, but if you leave existing Junealuska there, you know, it takes some creativity or otherwise to make it operate as really anything other than an elementary school, for sure, so, does that hit on?
It's on the wrong end of the county.
Yeah, for this, indeed, yeah, yeah. But just philosophically, you know, we did kinda stay at this end. So, Alternative Three, so this is kind of, you know, this is, this'll get, this'll get interesting to you. So we looked at the build of a new Pisgah High School with five new ball fields located on its campus, so not unreminiscent of Alternative One and Two, but we looked at the new high school build, and then kinda stepped back, but we pulled it below the line, because it can mean a lot of different things, and this is kinda playing back to the Power BI of, you could renovate the existing Pisgah High School as it is, and let that serve as a combo replacement for Canton Middle and Bethel Middle, you know, so the idea here, if we had all the money in the world, we could go build a new high school, get those folks out, you know, get Pisgah moved from existing campus to a new campus, and then get it renovated, and then move the folks from Canton and Bethel into there. Again, just an idea to kinda get y'all thinking in that way, if you will. Again, not trying to tell you what you better do or should do, but just an idea. So, you start to see, again, property acquisition, bigger school, more square footage, takes more acreage to make that happen, you got more drivers, if you will, you need more parking spaces, that kind of thing, so it drives the site cost. High school building cost up to 450 versus a 415, you know, and a bigger structure itself at 145,000 square feet, applying the FFNE and technology to it, contingency, those things down the line, you look at 117 million dollar effort, you know, to get you to there, but it's important, and I wanna caveat this, that 117 gets you the high school and the fields, it does not yet renovate the existing Pisgah, so come to the line below, and we just kinda provided you a range, you could do kinda the things that need to be done, which you just saw in Power BI, like your Priority One, Priority Two, you know, if you looked at that kinda replacement side of that, I think it was 12 million and change, Joe, was it? Yeah. Those deficiencies, so you could stop at that and say, okay, we've, we've stopped the bleeding, but we haven't, you know, really upgraded the school, we've just maintained the school. Or, if you slid out to the 70 million dollar number, you could likely gut renovate it and do the things at A building that you need to do there, you know, the library structure and that kind of thing, so, I know that's a wide. So, I know that's a wide span, um, but just trying, you know, so, is the one seventeen, is it really one thirty-two? Or is it one eighty-seven, you know? Um, but at the same time, you know, if you go to the one eighty-seven, you've effectively got three new schools accommodated in two different campuses, um, almost to brand-new construction and five ball fields. You know, so, it's a lot of money, we understand that. But again, just to kind of plant these seeds of, you know, how would one go at it, you know?
Patrick, you care to go over the additional thirty-five dollars a square foot for the high schools versus the middle school? David?
Uh, it's simply the difference in program.
Okay.
Yeah, like, think of a high school gym, high school gym bleachers.
Right.
It's, it's that simple.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. I didn't know if I was overthinking something.
No, no, thank you.
Well, the chairs and seats are bigger too, right? The now elementary school?
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta pay for bigger chairs, bigger seats, bigger tables in the cafeteria and stuff.
That'd be under the FFE cost.
Can I ask a question?
Actual building cost.
Do you, did you, you said a difference in programming, does that also mean additional athletics? Like, a middle school, they're not gonna have a tennis court, and they're probably not gonna have a track. But is the tennis courts and track in this proposal, or you would just utilize existing?
So, we've not, oh, I'm sorry.
There's an outdoor and an indoor, why don't you just, outdoor first?
So, accessory things, you know, they are somewhat encompassed in the site, if you will. By the time you've moved the dirt, if you will, you know, and so forth, there, we might be deficient, some paving numbers or some fencing numbers for, you know, let's call them, I mean, if I borrowed the college term, the non-revenue things, if you will, but it's got your gym, it's got your field houses, you know, kind of those larger, heavier duty numbers, if you will. But we just not down to the level of saying, well, we're doing an eight-lane track versus a six-lane, or, you know, two tennis courts versus six or, or otherwise. But those site numbers, I mean, they're, they're rather all-encompassing, you know, within reason, um, if you will. So, you know, it's one of those, like I say, by the time, in our lay of the land, if you can get the dirt moved, you know, it's like, you know, it's the difference in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar project and a million-dollar project, you know, a lot of times. So, there's significant savings in just creating the flat, the flat spot.
Patrick, on the, the new site building cost, does that include the stadiums, or is the site work just the grading?
Site work's just the grading.
So, is the cost of the new stadium included in the sixty-five? No, the?
Twenty-five. The twenty-five there?
Yeah, it's, the cost of stadium is not, that's just the site work.
That's right, and it gets your, it portrays the field, we've not yet carried a stadium number.
Does, but building a stadium, is that included in sixty-five to ninety-four?
That's just the school. Just the school.
Put the stadium up, but. Any estimates on that?
Stadium cost?
The bleachers, yeah.
As large as Pisga is this now, right?
So, two things on the indoor, there's a couple improvements I think we'll make to this for y'all. Number one, we can add easily hundred, you know, such-and-such square foot, X number of students, so that's just right on there. We don't have to look that up. And the other thing I think we'll do is we will, also for this in the middle schools, we will put in the DPI recommended program chart, because, for example, another reason the high schools are larger where the price goes up is the DPI might recommend two gyms.
That's what I was wondering.
Right, and they might, and that's in the square footage, and it's all prescribed. Um, and they, and they, they're gonna only re- recommend one gym, obviously, in elementary school. But we can get you that chart, so you have a, for sure, you know what's in there and what's not in there. This, um, and we're working at really rough numbers now, but that is important when we, if, it's, even if you're gonna go for a grant and we start to get serious about it. We have had experience before where DPI recommends such-and-such, and someone like the county schools or the board will say, that's great, but we want uh, two gyms and an auxiliary gym, whatever, and that's fine, but like, we would just want to be on the same page with y'all upfront. So, we'll, we'll get that included in there. And then we did have some discussions, this, this price at the moment does not include rebuilding at this site as large of a set of stands or as Pisga now, I will say, because that is an unusual structure. We could easily, easily is maybe not the right word. We can, uh, adjust this to include something like that, um, and I suspect we should. Yeah.
It would be representative of what DPI is ordinarily carrying in their personnel cost.
Right, DPI for a typical high school in North Carolina is not gonna have such an impressive set of stands, right? Like you guys have at Pisga, so if that's a direction you want us to make sure this includes something like that. Oh, yeah, no, no, we won't.
It's a wonderful, it was proper, but.
Yeah, no, no, um, but then we would, we can amend this to include something like that.
We could actually put in two, two different numbers, you know, leave the number you got, and say, here's if, if you went with a comparable stadium. Yeah.
Um, and so then, leaving alternative three, maybe just scrolling to four, is setting the schools aside, if you will, um, and largely looking at just a ball field complex for, um, eastern end of the county, if you will, just trying to get all of those fields that are flood-prone out of the flood plain. Again, same assumptions apply, you know, you can see the acreage curiously doesn't drop off a whole lot because you don't have that benefit of shared parking, if you will, you know? When, when you build the high school, you're already gonna have quote-unquote a thousand parking spaces there, right? You know, well, in the ball field complex only, you know, when you deliver the ball fields by themselves, you gotta park somewhere. You gotta think about concessions and bathrooms, and those are way by far allowances at this point in the concessions and bathrooms. You know, just depending on the size, type, variety, you know, what, what you want to deliver, if you will, um, you know?
Does not include the stadium itself.
Correct.
Or try.
Correct. Um, so, that could be a number that, you know, we carry. Like I say, we heard, you know, just leaving here last, is look at the flood-prone elements, if you will. Um, you know, ideologically, we can add-on, bolt-on anything else that we want to look at, for sure. So, again, just kind of taking the sum total of those things, forty acres of property estimated, um, carrying the same cost, um, site work, parking, I specifically enumerated it because it's basically goes unspoken, if you will, in the schools. Then concessions and baths is a new line item that shows up here, um, not specifically called out in the others. And then contingency, soft costs, um, and then total project, twenty-five million orders of magnitude. You know, so, again, you know, the, the news would be today, taken away, if we want to add things on, which we certainly can, um, you know, they're, they're in apples-to-apples comparison today, and, you know, if we add a, you know, a, let's call it a stadium superstructure to one, then we should also do that to the others so that they remain as such when they're, when they're looked at. But it was quite the interesting conversation, you know, just as we, you know, the, the Power BI thing was kind of coming into view that we looked at earlier, kind of helped frame, and obviously, y'all's discussion with us last time helped frame, you know, what could we look at? Are there ten other alternatives out there? Absolutely, there's, there's ten plus.
Hey, give us, give us a super rough number, not holding you to it. Plus or minus twenty-five percent on a stadium identical to Pisga or Tus- or Tuscola. You've got the concessions and bathrooms took care of, you got the property took care of, you got the parking took care of, and you got the athletic field itself took care of. Give us a rough, rough, rough number, and by no means holding you to this.
And would, would going back with concrete bleachers like we have be better? Or going with more like an aluminum-type stadium that you see in a lot of places? I mean, is there a big difference in doing?
For y'all, I would do it if I could, the truth is, I don't know, right? We, so, I don't. I mean, because we've not done something like that.
Okay.
And that, that was, you know, we, we sort of chuckled about it being impressive, but it is in the, in a way that we've not.
Right.
For all the K-12 experience we do have, I've not done that before. But we could find out. And also, between our Raleigh office and our Virginia Beach office have done other K through twelve. If they've done it, I can find out very quickly, but otherwise, we'll figure it out for you.
Okay.
It's a lot of money, ain't it, Patrick?
Now, and the other, the other relatable thing there too is, just speaking, pardon me, to the side is, well.
He got water.
You know, the potential exists that a stadium could be built into the landscape and not have to be freestanding in such a superstructure. You know, so, so we could draw these ideologies of, hey, we're gonna have to build exactly what we have, but we may, may not have to build it in that way, if you will, you know? So, those would be things to look at, you know, I'm imagining North Henderson, um, Smoky Mountain, Asheville High, those type of varieties, so, yeah.
Talk to.
Oh, absolutely.
We, we were talking four fifteen a square foot versus four fifty a square foot. How does that number change for one story versus multiple-story buildings?
Well, the number we have now is for two-story buildings, because some of these get to the size, like Patrick mentioned, that a lot of our middle schools and high schools end up being two stories.
Right.
Um, at that scale, it's usually more expensive to build single-story. If you're talking about a hundred thousand square foot building, because.
Spread out.
That's right. You've got twice the roof area.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And, and practically, I hope that answers your question, not trying to get around it at all, just practically, almost all of our middle and high schools end up being two stories.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
I mean, obviously, a three-story building per square foot would be more than a two-story square foot. I-beam, subfloor, correct? You have less roof and less property.
Not necessarily, believe it or not, necessarily, Asheville Middle School, which we did, was three stories.
Yeah.
The, you've got the same amount of facade at the end of the day, so that doesn't really go down. But the roof structure is actually a little less expensive than floor structure, which is what you're getting at.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't think that'd be a big driving factor.
But then you have to have elevators, right?
Yes.
You go up, and that's, that's a huge expense, right?
I think we've given y'all a number that's safe with which we can, we can do one, two, or three-story structures, yeah.
Security, um, one advantage, yep, one building, to the two-story, less entrances, more secure building. I'm sure y'all factored that in as well, so.
Yeah, keep it more confined.
So, again, you know, level of detail here is, if you thought we were at thirty thousand feet, we're at fifty thousand, right? You know, just trying to give you a lay of the land, you know, as you start thinking about funding formulas and grant applications, and how might we attack or arrange this? Because not only do we have some of this list, we've got this other deficiencies list over here that we now know about. And it's quantified, you know, so, competing interests, you know, of maintenance versus replacement, all those kind of things. So, it's a.
Only thing you're not bringing us, Patrick, is a pot of money.
We've only spent three-hundred million.
Next meeting, right? Yeah, yeah.
You bring that back next time.
Yeah, that's right.
When that lottery gets up to billion dollars, we all need to go invade.
No.
Very good information, thanks.
Good evening, mate, thank you.
You're welcome, and I think we've heard clearly some improvements we'll make to this, but are there any other? Uh, you know, again, we've tried to show four alternatives that are fairly different, any? And we can tweak it, but any other bigger ideas or any questions about a different alternative or the alternatives we have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you all.
Great job.
That's awesome. Lot to think about, dream about.
Thank you, Patrick.
But we will get a copy of this for options, right?
Yeah.
We'll make sure we get a copy. Now, do you wanna, you wanna just get a motion out of going to closed, is there anything else we need to do?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion for closed.
Okay. There will be no board action taken tonight, but we will, uh, go into closed session to discuss personnel issues or property acquisition or any kind of law stuff we need to talk about, but anyway. All right, at this time, I need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Francis made the motion to go into closed sec- second by Mr. Nesbit. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those folks say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Nance, so we'll go into closed session.